Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education meeting. We're going to open the meeting with a public hearing on the amendment to income eligibility limits for senior citizens taxation on residential property pursuant to section 467 of the real property tax law. And Ms. Figarella is going to explain.
Good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit for the hearing about the senior citizens exemption and the details about that. So this hearing is to decide if the board will adopt a resolution to change the existing senior citizen sliding scale for the aged all exemption. And that's how it appears on the tax bill as aged all to the Putnam Valley school tax rolls. It must be applied but for annually by March 1st. So every year, anybody who's interested in applying has to do so before March 1st, regardless of what the scale is. So the aged all exemption usually goes hand in hand with the disabled exemption that we have already established as well. Those scales are exactly the same, but we are not, the board is not deciding on that disabled scale tonight because it was not part of the hearing announcement. So if we have to adjust that scale, it will have to be at a hearing in a future meeting, a future hearing date. So just to note, Putnam County has already adopted the new scale for the aged all exemption, and now the town and the school districts have to decide if they're going to modify their scales. And that's in the entire county, it's in all the counties in the state. It's something that the governor has already recommended, not necessarily recommended, but allowed for in communities, municipalities, and schools. So this particular exemption is known as the RPTL, that's Real Property Tax Law, aged all, code 41-800. I mention that because that's how it appears on your school tax bill, and this allows seniors to apply for an exemption based on their income. Right now, their eligibility is an income scale from 29,000 to 37,400, and it's, you know, graduated scale goes from 5% to 50%, depending on your income. And the most recent scale was phased in over 2000, from 2007 to 2009, just to give you a little history, and it hasn't changed since then. The aged all senior citizens exemption schedule requires action by the board, that's why we're having the hearing. And it's, I'm sorry, that's not why we're, it requires a hearing and also action by the board. The exemption's not reimbursed by the state like STAR is, rather, it results in a tax shift. So in other words, any of the exemptions that are granted are removed from those eligible properties, and then it reduces the total taxable assessed value. So when we divide to get the rate by the tax levy, it, the divisor changes because the exemptions have reduced the total assessed value. Just to give you a little background of what it's about, here is the existing maximum income scale that I just mentioned. It goes between 29,000 and 37,400, graduated scale from 5 to 50%. The year one proposed maximum income would be 48,399, and the starting income would be 40,000 or less for the 50% reduction. Oh, let me go back. Right now, so what we didn't have last time at the meeting was like particulars on how many parcels and this and that. So there are 61 parcels right now that get 50% reduction, and then there are, there's 82 in all, but they get, you know, slightly different amounts depending on their income. So what I took into account when I made the assumptions on what the impact was going to be is that all parcels that have exemptions right now, meaning all 82 of them, would slide into the 50% scale because they're all, if I go back, so the high, the high income was 37,400, well, if the low income is 40, they're all going to slide up to the 50%. And then any new applicants that may qualify, there would be additional parcels. I don't know how many additional parcels would qualify because I don't know what people's incomes are. And that would range, again, you know, to qualify in that, in those lower amounts between 5 and 45%. So again, the exemption would grow depending on how many people applied. Another assumption that we need to think about is that senior citizens overall, they've had cost of living increases in their annual social security income, you know, their checks. So that can create some unintended consequences, and that's why the governor's created this because I feel like people are going to be, you know, getting eliminated from the scale because their income is increasing, but it's not increasing like a tremendous amount, it's making up for the inflation factor. So here is what I'm estimating the impact to be. Of course, I really have no way of knowing who will apply for those lower income levels, I mean, those higher income levels and qualify. So right now, exempt from our rolls for the current scale is 12,716,902, which is the 82 parcels. The 82 parcels will slide up into the 50% discount, and I asked, I just put two applicants on each level, not knowing really, you know, how many there would be. I have no way to know. So quantifying that at $18.4 million. This was just a little fact I put at the bottom, but it's just to show you that even though there are 1,826 residents that are over 65, I have no way of knowing how many of them live together, should I just assume there's a couple in every residence, like you can't make those assumptions. So I don't really know. And, but I do know that 15 and a half percent of our total population in Putnam Valley is over 65. I've also put a little link here. It goes to the, where I got that information from the Census Bureau, if anybody wants to look it up. And this will be on our website too for people to look at. Okay, so year two and three, this is what the county and the state is proposing, you know, to implement over time, the next two years after that, year two and year three. So it raises the income levels increments by $5,000 for each, each level of savings. This is example of how the tax shift. So in the beginning, I mentioned there's a STAR exemption that we all, everybody's entitled to apply for if they meet the eligibility, but this is more of a tax shift. So for instance, if the taxable assessed value, this is what it is currently for the whole entire town, and if we had exemptions of 12.7, it would adjust our taxable value to 1.5 billion. And then we would take the levy and divide it into that number. This is not the levy, this is just an example. I used a flat $35 million. It would result in $23.02 per thousand with a tax bill of 92.09. Based on a home that's average value is 400,000. Then shifting it using the new assumption that the exemptions would be 18.4 million, bringing the assessed value down, the tax rate up, and then that would be the new amount for taxes, 9,244, a difference of $35 annually. Again, that's just on an average home of 400,000. The way you would quantify what you owe in taxes is your tax rate times your taxable value. So whatever your house is worth, that's the difference in the taxes that you would pay. And looking at this, after analyzing it a little bit, it came to the conclusion that in this situation, every million dollars of reduction in taxable value results in like $5 annually for every taxpayer. So these are some of the considerations the board has to think about. It's not possible to know the actual property owner's income from year to year to accurately quantify the impact. So some of those people could drop on, drop off or come on to that scale depending on what their income is. Seniors may lose their current percent of exemption due to the social security income increasing. Last year in 2022, it increased by 5.9% and in 2023, 8.7%. So option one would be to take no action, the exemption remains as it is, and then, again, the deadline to apply regardless of what the scale is, is March 1st. Phase, option two would be to phase this in over three years, as I mentioned, those three different scales. Putnam County and the town of Putnam Valley has already adopted it. It's officially going to be on the town and county portion of the bill, and it's going to be on the town and county portion of every town in Putnam County. But in the schools, the schools have to decide on their own. So it is expected to be adopted by each of these following towns and schools, I'm sorry, that should say schools, Brewster, Kent, Patterson, Putnam Valley, if you decide, East Fishkill, and Wapinjors over a three-year period. And that's the taxable status date of March 1st each year. So those are the increments and how they would change from year to year. And it's consistent with what we did in 2007, over three years phased it in, in all of those places. Usually the towns and the schools go on the same, you know, go with the same scale. So if the, if the town goes with one, you know, the school goes with one scale, the town goes with the scale. And not, but on all towns do the same thing. That's the, that's the hard part for the assessor. This is just some information about the Social Security Administration and how the 10-year history of social security has changed. These are all the rate increases over those 10 years. An average monthly benefit, an average annual benefit in 2022 was $18,000 a year. The maximum monthly benefit for 2023 is 39,348. Obviously, I wouldn't know what the average monthly benefit is because that information is not available yet. And that's all I have to introduce the hearing, if anybody has any questions before making a decision about that.
Jill, can you remind us how the income is identified?
The income is what?
Identified.
Oh, well, it's an application process. I don't, we don't have the applications, they don't apply to us. They apply to, I do have, here, the town of Putnam Valley has a very comprehensive website and a lot of information on there as well. The application is actually right on, oh, can I scroll? Is right on here. Is it, it's 467, right? Because there's a lot of different ones I'm asking you. I think that was the name of it. So here, it kind of gives you the criteria at the bottom of the application. It tells you some fast facts. Oh, it doesn't. It does on the other ones. I'm going to go back and see if it's. Yeah, there's the state one also. Let me go back here. No, those are the instructions. There you are. Can't find the page. Great, okay. All right, well, let me see.
So.
So they have to apply for it, they have to give their tax forms in, they have to, I don't know what lines they look at, you have to follow the instructions on the form. There are certain things that are, you know, removed from, like, there are certain types of inheritances that are removed, but it can change. People lose their status sometimes, and then they get it back the following year. Once you lose it, you don't, you don't lose it. You may lose it for that year because of your income, but I can't speak to all of the intricacies of the application.
And if there's one over 65 in the household and one under?
No, I, they both have to be 65 in order to apply for it.
And it's based off individual income, not joint income?
If they file jointly, it's based on the, yeah, on that return, but they have to, if they're both, if they're both 65 and filing separately, yeah, they have to add them together. I don't know, again, what lines they look at, but.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Trying to.
So Jill, each of these 82 that are already existing, as far as receiving the exemption.
Yeah.
There's nothing new for them other than the dollar amounts are changing, but they all would know that they, they had to apply every year for this. This is not, it's not like STAR where you buy one.
Correct. I don't know what kind of campaign the town does as far as notification, but people that have, you know, are interested in applying for it have to apply for it every year.
Every year. So in theory, those 82 people should already know that they have to do it. Okay.
Are there any public questions?
Sure.
You want to come up to the microphone, please?
Well, is this questions or comments?
Comments?
Either.
Sure, questions or comments?
Public hearing.
Hi, I'm Patty Villanova, and some of the information, you could, Jill, you could have just like, you could have asked the tax assessor, she would have told you how many parcels. She has all that information readily available as to how many people are getting the senior, you know, and which parcels and all of that, but if it's also that state form, somebody asked about what the criteria is, it's different than STAR. In other words, the income, this is, I've been working on this now for years trying to get it, and, you know, there was a time we were, you know, maybe eligible, but anyway, the STAR is like $85,000 income, which is why so many people can get that. So this is something completely different.
Correct.
And the reason that the two, that, you know, even though we base it on the income tax forms, like you have to submit when you apply for this, the first two pages of your federal tax return. It's like when you first go in for STAR. So I had contacted Sandy Galiff and different representatives, and I said, well, why is the senior discount so small compared to STAR? And I was told that it was an error on the part of the legislature, that the senior discount had been around many years before STAR, and it was never conformed, the two amounts were never conformed. And it would take an act of the legislature to make it the same, because, you know, you're talking about your income tax form. So Sandy Galiff, before she retired, God bless her, she worked very hard to increase this amount to $50,000. She also was working to try to get them to correct this and make the STAR requirements, you know, very close to the senior, but it didn't ever happen. But anyway, the other thing is that what, the proposal that I wanted to speak on too is the legislature passed a law, the law that's in the public hearing, the legislature passed a law that now allows the income to go up to 50,000 for this year. Okay, that's the law. It's your choice as a board. You could, you could go to the full 50 if you wanted to.
Correct.
But as I said in my other comments when I talked, you know, at the town hearing, instead, you're going to make it go to 40 if you adopt your schedule, the same schedule as the town and the county. You're not going to have 50,000. You're going to only, you know, you're going to work your way up to it. Your proposal is for January, for this year, like in other words, if we're going to apply for March 1st, the income is $40,000. You actually could, if you wanted to, I mean, I guess you could keep it at 29,000 if you really wanted to, to sock it to us, but you actually could vote to go with what the state legislature passed, which is 50,000, which is much more reasonable, you know, considering how expensive it is. Now, what I wanted to say about this too is, you know, my husband and I are seniors, and for all you ageist people out there, you think it's not going to happen, it will happen to you. You eventually will hit 65, 75 and over. It happens to all of us. We've lived here for generations, and we live in the same house that we built in the 1980s, and we watched as the taxes doubled and tripled. We don't want to move to Florida or another state. We have deep roots in this area, including children and grandchildren. We want to stay in our home as long as we can. But however, it is a bitter irony that as we get older and our ability to earn an income has decreased, our property taxes continue to climb with no end in sight. Now Jill pointed out that this is not like STAR, this is merely, we're not going, there's not going to be a repayment, that it is shifting the burden. It is shifting the burden. It is shifting it from 70, 80, 90-year-old people to people that are younger, okay? And this, what I've been trying to work on is this exemption should not be based on income. It should be based, we need a purely aged deduction, you know, or whatever you want to call it, exemption. It shouldn't, we shouldn't have to go through these contortions. You shouldn't have people like my mother, you know, who was 90-something still having to pay these, although she was able to get the deduction, which was great. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, is you get older, you can't earn as much money, you know, for most people. And that, yes, it is a shifting, and a justifiable shifting, you know, of the burden to younger people. Okay, so that is true. So anyway, okay, so although most seniors have claimed the enhanced STAR exemption, there are many who would greatly benefit if they were eligible for the senior citizen exemption. I explained to you, they raised it to 50,000, okay? Anyway, to the current situation, while the legislature agreed to raise the income limit to 50,000, now the boards want to cut that amount by 20% to 40,000. I really don't fathom how you could do such a thing or why you would want to do that. You know, some of you have worked in the public sector and your situation, you guys were smart. Anybody that became a teacher or somebody that worked in the system, God bless you, you were smarter than me. But you guys have, you know, salaries and benefits that many of us who are in business in the private sector, we can only dream of. And you know what? You don't realize what it's like to be an aging taxpayer in a town where our taxes just keep going and going. And you know what? Thanks to the current regime in Washington and Albany, there are actually seniors in this town who have to choose between food, heat, and property taxes. It's really unbelievable. And this, for many, many people like my mom and many others that know, this senior discount makes the difference. It makes all the difference in the world. They can get a 50% break on their taxes, you know, and maybe it would help them be able to stay in their, in their homes. The other thing is that in my experience, this program, now the assessor, the tax, the Putnam Valley tax assessor has the discretion and all of this, she's the one that will sign off on the form. I have seen instances where she is not, not just her, even in the past, but she's, I know of instances with her, it's not being administered properly. She's doing things and adding things, and there's no way you can complain, you can make a complaint to the town board. So again, it would be much cleaner and neater if this board would, I would hope, you would go to the 50,000, you know? I would, in conclusion, I urge all of you to consider the plight of the many seniors in town who are trying to remain in their homes in this community. My family moved here in 1955. I don't want to be forced out now. We have more than paid our fair share of taxes, and it's terrible that residents in their 70s, 80s, and 90s are dealing with the same tax burden as the younger generation. Please keep the $50,000 income limitation that the legislature gave us, and if anything, work to increase it in future years. You could also use your influence to contact state representatives and urge them to align the senior citizen exemption with the STAR, you know, to make it more realistic. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments about the tax exemption? Okay, then I'd like to adjourn the public hearing on the aged all senior tax exemption. And I'd like to convene our business meeting, wait a minute, let me, of February 9th, 2023, with a pledge to the flag done by, led by Ms. Thompson's third grade class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson's class. That was lovely. I'd like to open it up on, to public comment on the listed agenda items. Okay, I would like to say that the treasurer's report is available in the business office, the December 2022 treasurer's report is available in the business office. Moving to the consent agenda, item number one, please.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items 2 through 10 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The consent agenda contains approval of the last meeting's minutes, approval of mid-year in-service and graduate credits, CSE, CPSC placements, additions to the 2223 sublisting. We're approving and amending additional work hours for staff members. We're approving unpaid time for staff members. We're approving health and welfare contracts. We're approving an agreement with Manhattanville College for teaching apprentices, and we're accepting donations, one of which is a donation to the John Klinegris Scholarship, and the other donation, let me look that one up.
Tree Athletic Hall of Fame from New York School.
The New York State reciprocal, insurance reciprocal donated $1,000, which we utilize for the new Hall of Fame in the athletic department. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. We are going to open it up for student, for reports, so we're going to let the students go first.
On the sports side of things, a lot of our winter sport teams are heading into sectionals, and just the other night, one of our female basketball players even just passed the 2,000-point mark, which is a historical thing for the school and even in the section and state. It's really a huge accomplishment. And we have a big spring musical that's underway. It's Something Rotten, which I'm pretty sure is a big Broadway show, so it's going to be great to see a lot of those students take on the task. And for spring sports, which is just right, right around the corner, signups are starting to begin, so lacrosse, golf, all those good sports, if you want to play, we urge you to sign up. And a lot of our honor society inductions have started, and we still have a few more, like the National Honor Society to go. So some exciting things going on, and we're inching closer to February break, so things are good on our end.
Yeah, Christian pretty much said it all.
I did appreciate the fact that you guys had a blood drive today, you know? Yes? How did that go?
Yeah. They wouldn't let me donate blood, so, but otherwise, I think it went pretty smoothly. It was a nice little van right outside. Yeah. Everyone was donating.
Well, I appreciated getting the invitation from Simone. That was, it was nice of her to send it to the board.
Yeah, and this time they like sent email reminders to like everyone who signed up, so, just to make sure like they would attend, because last time, I think a lot of people forgot, so they're really on top of it this time, it was nice. I think they had a bigger turnout, so that's good.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Dr. Love?
Thank you. Good evening all. So some of the events that have happened since our last meeting, our guidance counselors from the high school held their junior parents' evenings, they talk about all things college, the application process, the selection process, essay writing, all of that, good stuff that goes into that. It was pretty well attended by our parents, and again, a thanks to all those who made that possible. Our science National Honor Society had their induction ceremony, as well as our English Honor Society. We celebrated the Chinese New Year with our kindergarten class, so this is back for the first time in a couple of years. And getting seeing a five-year-old sing songs in Mandarin is pretty special. Many of the board members were able to attend, and obviously, tear invoking of parents when they see their little five-year-old up there singing songs to them in Mandarin, it's a very special thing. So again, kudos to all those who make that possible, and certainly our partnership with P&amp;W Bosse's for helping support that program. Our own Dr. Messera held our most recent parent workshop on student anxiety. That was very well attended, as any parent would. Student anxiety is an issue on the forefront for many of us. So again, we thank Dr. Messera for his time and knowledge, and we expect to see future workshops offered. workshops offered for parents, uh, by Dr. Messera. Uh, our Student National Honor Society had their blood drive. Again, you had mentioned Eva scored her two thousandth point. I was able to be there and witness that, a very special event. Uh, we had some Putnam Valley students showcased in the Katona Art Museum Youth Artist Exhibition, so I know Jackie was able to attend. I don't know if anybody else made it there, but, yeah, the opening day was February fifth, and that runs through the twenty-sixth, so if you have a chance to stop by and check it out. We celebrated World Read Aloud Day at the elementary school. I attended a school safety meeting with the Putnam County Sheriff, and we have some science research, uh, kudos. So we actually had an incredible showing at the subregional competition. Uh, three students qualified for the state competition in Albany, Sophia Goncalves, David Delapi, and Tara Dolak, all qualified, so the first two finished first, Tara finished second. And then we also had four students, Connor Flynn, Simone Gabriel, Taylor Rogers, and Ava McGinty placed third. So a terrific showing for our science research students, and, uh, best of luck to those students moving forward to the next phase of competition in Albany. We also had our first Science Olympiad, uh, in the Mid-Hudson Regional Tournament, and we had six students who medaled in that. So, um, Mr. McManus, and I know Mr. Fiore was also involved, and again, congratulations to all those for their hard work, uh, that went into that, and I'll look forward to see the success continue. Some other things I've taken place, uh, Section One Athletics Executive Council had met. Uh, the big news was a return to the county center for regional, I mean, for sectional basketball play, so that's something that's been missed. County Center has become a hospital, a triage center, vaccination site, and, uh, has been updated and is ready to again start hosting athletic events. So actually, our sectional basketball tournament will be the first sporting event back in the county center since it closed for COVID, so that's something to look forward to. We're internally holding principals' meetings, having discussions about tenure candidates and staff evaluations, best practices in communication, time and attendance procedures, as well as security protocols. Uh, superintendent's meeting I attended today, lots of budget updates and legislative priorities. I also joined a meeting with our assemblyman, Matt Slater, with the Westchester Putnam School Board Association. Uh, Ms. Parmley was on there with me as well today. So we had a great conversation with Assemblyman Slater about what some of our priorities are and some of the things that we hope to see Albany accomplish this year. And then this afternoon, we held our most recent DEI committee meeting. Uh, we highlighted some of the many achievements, uh, we've experienced so far this year, and really focused a lot of our conversations on bringing outside speakers in to meet with not just students, but teachers as well as parents. So all of that to come. Uh, collective bargaining with both the teachers' union and the CSEA continues. Our next CSEA, uh, meeting is tomorrow, and, um, we're just awaiting a response from the teachers' union, so hopefully we can get those resolved as soon as possible. And just some quick upcoming events. Next Wednesday is our middle school parent meeting about the IB middle years program, so any current or upcoming middle school parent who's interested, I encourage you to attend. The sixteenth is our elementary school parent meeting, uh, focusing on the scholastic literacy program. And then we have the upcoming February break, February twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Following that, we have our next, uh, superintendent's advisory council meeting on February twenty-eighth, and a listening hour prior to the March sixteenth Board of Education meeting. That's it. Thank you.
That's a lot. Um, okay, so we're going to move now into presentations. So the first presentation is the special education presentation.
So I'd like to welcome up our Assistant Superintendent Natalie, Dr. Do, Natalie Doherty, and Ms. Melissa Estrella. Welcome.
You just heard from us a few weeks ago, so I thought I'd keep this really short and sweet. Uh, it is really budget-focused, um, without a lot of, um, pictures and anecdotal stories, so, um, but I do have one video in here that we couldn't play the last time that I really, uh, want everybody to see. So briefly, um, some of our special education services, as we talked about the last time, are, um, our various, uh, different classes, our programming, our related services, uh, that Melissa will speak to in a little while, in a few moments. Assistive technology, adaptive materials, um, we do hold an extended school year program, and that's a six-week program over the summer, where students that show regression attend and are recommended for that program. We also, every year, look at staffing and future planning. So here is the video, and this video, I'll just tell you a little bit about it. One of the big initiatives, um, that we've had over the past few years is really, um, in our smaller class programs, uh, their ratio is eight students, one teacher, um, and one assistant. Often, students will need additional assistance, um, to, to work hand over hand with them. This is a student who, um, uses a talker to be, to be able to communicate. Without a talker, um, you would never know how much knowledge and, and just how intelligent this, you know, our students are, and what they come to, and what they bring to, to the world. Um, so I'm going to show you a little snippet of somebody using what's called a touch chat.
Where is the boy?
Is? Boy? Who? Where is the boy?
You're right. Where is the boy? He is.
In? No. Who?
So again, it was just a really short snippet, but both as a teacher and as a parent, when you know a child has so much inside, and you want them to be able to show you what they know, this talker has really allowed our students to, um, to show us how much they, they know and how much they have inside of them. And as a parent, you know, when your child isn't able to say, "I love you," or "good night," um, and they're able to really express these things, or their needs or their wants, it is really life-changing. And we are seeing, um, decreases in, uh, behavior frustration, um, being able to perform academic tasks close to grade level by using a talker. So we're really have, um, a lot of investment in our, with our speech therapists and our teachers and our TAs that, um, participate, and, and often in the hallways, you'll see our students now starting to use their talkers with other, with other students. Um, so it, it just really is a big initiative, and, um, I look forward to seeing where it's going to go, and, and as our students get older and, and participating in general education classrooms.
Do they take it home, Natalie?
They do. Mm-hmm. And their parents are, often use it with them. Uh, they're trained, and the speech therapist is now sort of turnkeying, um, some of our new faculty and staff.
As, as sort of covered last time in our last presentation, we offer an array of services, K through twelve. As Dr. Doherty was mentioning, we have classrooms that are highly specialized, eight students, one teacher, one TA. So if you take a look at the picture to the left, that's an individualized workstation. In the colorful cubbies to the right are interactive materials that allow the child to work on previously mastered skills to new lessons. Um, they also have the opportunity, if you look at the picture below, it's a panoramic view of the classroom. Students move between station teaching, whole group instruction, where the interactive whiteboard, the white square there is, also utilizing sensory breaks. There's a swing there. There's also many other items within the classroom to allow for these, these breaks throughout the day. Then if we take a look at the picture to the right, this is where our ratio, um, becomes a little bit higher, twelve, fifteen students. Um, right now, you see Mrs. John preparing a guided, a guided reading lesson for three to four students, but what you don't see is behind her, there are also two other groups of students learning simultaneously at their level. Oh, no, there we are. As we move ahead, we take a look at our integrated co-teaching classes, which has a general education teacher and a special education teacher. The specially designed instruction is provided within the general education classroom. ICT teachers utilize various methods of teaching, one of which is parallel teaching, where two groups of learners are able to receive instructions simultaneously, to whereas other, um, methods would be station teaching, where students rotate between the gen ed teacher, the special education teacher, and independent workstations. The picture to the right is our high school classroom. You can also see students learning at their various tables to interact with each other while teachers are able to walk around. All right. We also utilize highly specialized programs within New York State-approved schools, so non-public schools, special act schools, neighboring school districts. You can see in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, um, we were able to receive many students back to our, back to the home district of Putnam Valley. New York State encourages public schools to all, always offer opportunities for students to return back to district when appropriate. We do this through various means. Constant communication with the other school districts, many conversations with parents, obviously committee, um, meetings, but most importantly, we also go and visit the students in the school to not only ensure that they're receiving the proper academics, but if they are ready to return to district. We also have one student that is tuitioned in from a neighboring school district, attending one of our specialized programs.
So, as you can see, um, by the numbers, our staffing has really remained pretty consistent over the years. Um, right now, we have one CSC chairperson. Uh, we are recommending, which will be later tonight, that that, uh, title be changed to a special education supervisor, but the number is the same. Uh, special education teachers, uh, we're recommending twenty-five point, uh, twenty-five teachers, and then a point five of a teacher. Um, teaching assistants, uh, we're going to recommend two additional, uh, TAs with some of those students that we did bring back to district. They needed extra support, so we, um, in order to bring them back, we feel the need to recommend two additional people next year. Uh, teaching aides has remained consistent for teaching aides throughout the district. Uh, clinicians, uh, that's psychologists and social workers. Um, as you, you may remember, we recommended, uh, last, this year, um, bringing on, instead of a point six social worker, which is what we had, shows, we had somebody that worked sixty percent of the time, we recommended a full-time, uh, social worker, so that increased from six point four to seven. Um, and we're going to recommend the same seven clinicians next year. Occupational and physical therapists, uh, we're recommending the same, uh, two, uh, one physical therapist full-time, one occupational therapist full-time, and then one occupational therapist eighty percent of the time. Speech, we are continuing to recommend three full-time and one part-time person. So I just wanted to sort of outline, uh, over the next few years, what we're going to be looking at. So this year, we've really looked at an increase in awareness of our special programs, really honing in on what those needs are. Coming out of COVID, they do look a little different. Um, professional development in the area of reading, as we've had teachers retire over the past few years, um, we need to really look at professional development for some of our teachers that are currently here, and that is really multisensory instruction, like a Wilson program or preventing academic failure. And those programs are really highly specialized for students who just do not, um, learn reading in a very typical way. So they often use, uh, multisensory, which means tactile, auditory, visual, um, all of those different senses in order to teach them reading. And we'll, we'll continue to, um, over the next few years, to build capacity. Computer-based testing, that, um, really, New York State is looking at, um, computer-based testing, so we are participating and training our faculty and our students on how to, um, take, to be proficient in computer-based testing. And then, um, professional development will continue in the area of co-teaching, and when to use those different models of station teaching, parallel teaching, one teach, one assist, um, and all of the six different models. In twenty-four, twenty-five, we're not sure, but I want to start having the conversations, that we may need one additional special educator, because our students that are coming in in our smaller class programs, the eight-one-one programs that are highly specialized, um, will be moving up in the years, so we may need one in grades seven, eight. Um, right now, our numbers are showing that we don't need it because of the population changes, but if we take on more students from other districts, right now, we have one student from another district, we have a few students that are, uh, interested in our program right now for next year, and then I'm in conversations with Garrison and potentially Haldane on creating some programs, so if we tuition in students, the tuition may end up paying for a teacher anyway, um, so I put that in there just to start those conversations. And then, um, a behaviorist, right now, we contract with Bosse's for behavioral services, and what behavior services really do is work with our specialized programs, and even some of our, um, you know, every once in a while, what pops up is a student who really is struggling behaviorally, and a behaviorist will go in, work with the teacher, work with our TAs, work with our administrators, and work with their families on really changing and, um, changing the behaviors that aren't always, um, so easy to change as a teacher with a full classroom. So in other words, if you have a student on the autism spectrum, and they have a certain ritual that is impacting their ability to function in a school, that behaviorist really goes in, observes, works with all of the staff, and helps to create a plan to change those behaviors so that the child can really function in our programs and be maintained within our district. Even if we can keep one or two students every single year that we would send out because of their behaviors, um, if, so let's say if they're on the autism spectrum, that behavior service would become such a support to our families. Again, we're using, it's gonna, it's gonna ultimately be a question of, how is it, how are they going to serve our students? How are they going to serve our families? How are they gonna, how is a behaviorist going to serve our faculty and staff? And then lastly, how is it going to financially benefit us in order to, to keep our students here in our district if we hire our own behavior, behaviorist? Um, so that we'll be looking at over the next year or two. We'll be looking at both of our numbers, uh, of incoming students and what we're currently spending through Bosse's, and making those decisions, obviously publicly, and with all of you in mind, so. And do you have any questions?
Dr. Doherty, uh, could you give us a breakdown of the seven, uh, psychologists and social workers? How many of each, and where they're stationed?
Sure. So we have two psychologists at the elementary school, one psychologist at the middle school, and one social worker at the middle school. And then we have two psychologists at the high school and one social worker at the high school. Um, when we look at the testing data, uh, there is more testing because students are exiting, and we're required to test certain students, so there is more testing at the high school, so you see, um, two psychologists there, but there may be a need for the, um, that psychol, one of the psychologists at the high school to help test, uh, students at the middle school at times.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both very much. So our next presentation this evening will be our facilities operation and transportation budget presentation, and I'll invite up Mr. David Spittle. Thank you.
So, uh, like special ed, I was here in November, and I
So like special ed, I was here in November and I discussed a lot of, all the projects, the capital projects, small and large projects, ongoing, prior projects that were finished with, with kids playing on them and, and then some future ideas. So tonight, what I'd like to, to focus on is things within my realm in operations and transportation that, that will affect the budget this year and ongoing. So this is the staffing. This is very similar to the slide you've seen for about 12 years now. We haven't really changed the staffing. Notice that, that in transportation, there are 17 FTEs. That's the same as it has been for some time. But we have two open positions for bus drivers there. There's actually 15 people in, in transportation right now with two openings for bus drivers. And that's been an ongoing struggle, obviously, to find bus drivers. So if anybody out there is interested, it's a really good team. So fiscal sustainability as we thrive, you know, why it's so important in an operations, we do everything within our power to, to reduce our, our spending is, one is that we can leverage district resources for maximum effect on students, alleviate pressure on academic programs and create opportunities for teachers. And important tools that I use, I came up with this last year and I just added one this year, was utilizing the skill sets of the existing staff to get projects done that we don't have to hire out for, which is, the next bullet is insourcing those, that's using our, our staff to accomplish tasks and, and do projects so we don't have to hire out at higher rates. Collaborating, creating efficiencies and, and another really important one that I'm going to elaborate on further here is investing in sustainable energy. So systems that you don't see that really will have an impact on our budget, I've categorized into, into three sections here. One is, is our water systems. Another is HVAC and with HVAC will, will also be electricity and then transportation. Starting with water, we know clean water is essential for health. And I found a quote from, from Putnam Valley history. As you know, I'm a Putnam Valley history buff, that, that this is when Israel Ben Shriver was looking to start the school district and build the elementary school in the 30s. The, he applied to the state to have the 12 acres that were donated be good to build the school on at that elementary school. And this was the main concern was the quality and, and amount of the water in order to get approval from New York State. So this was a quote from his book. We know that we have on the school site an artesian well giving a yield of 30 gallons of pure water per minute, which is enough to supply a good-sized community. So if they didn't have this, they would obviously have to bring water in from somewhere else to accommodate the 15 gallons of student per day requirement. And that would have been a very expensive venture to get water in here from, from Peak School or wherever they had to get it from. So recently in the papers, you've heard, some of you, about this PFAS in, in the water. And I wanted to just list some of the facts and I've been immersed in this PFAS situation for over two years now. So this is, these are important facts that I wanted to illustrate tonight. The Putnam County Department of Health has jurisdiction over the water at Putnam Valley Elementary School. So they tell us how often we have to test, what we test for and what we have to do as a result of those tests. If we have to post something, we have to notify people. If we can't drink the, drink the water, they're in charge of the water at the elementary school. If you don't know in the community or on the board, this campus, the high school, middle school campus uses water that comes in from Yorktown. It's, it's already municipal water. They're responsible to test it. We're not responsible to test that water. This water comes in down, down Foothill Street and into this building from there. The Putnam Valley Elementary School water is tested quarterly and they make us test for an array of different things and results are submitted to the Putnam County Department of Health as soon as we get them from the lab. The, the Putnam County Department of Health began, began requiring tests for this PFAS. I'm not going to try to pronounce these things, but they're known as forever chemicals and they've been, been obviously linked to cancer if you've read, read about them. The Putnam Valley Elementary School water was tested in October of 20 during, during the pandemic here. We tested because we have someone on staff who's certified to, to test water. We tested four months before we were required to because I was anxious to, to see what was going on here. And in that test, we were shocked to find that there were trace amounts, 21.6 parts per trillion of PFAS and 16.6 parts per trillion of PFA. Now, parts per trillion is a very, very, very tiny amount. It's like every part per trillion is like a, a drop of water in Olympic-sized swimming pool. That's what it relates to. So this isn't like a massive contamination, but New York State and then therefore the, the Putnam County Department of Health lowered their threshold for, they, they required us to test and they, they lowered the threshold lower than, than any other state in the union. So we're, we're the first to have to deal with this issue in New York and in Putnam Valley because we tested early, we're the first ones in New York State to have to deal with this issue. And so the PFAS levels in the water have never tested above the Putnam County Department of Health's MCL, which is a maximum contamination level of 70 parts per trillion. Now, that is very important because if it, if they did test above that, then the Department of Health would have made us, you know, announce to the community to not let us drink the water and whatever we had to do, there would have been that. But they deem it safe if there's trace amounts under that, safe to drink, safe for any use. And it's very important that that information is out there, that the, the Department of Health never considered our water to be anything but safe and drinkable. The Putnam Valley Elementary School water has never been considered unsafe to drink. I just said that. Putnam Valley is among the first in New York State and probably United States, and probably the US to address and eliminate the PFAS. So once we found this in the water, we immediately contacted some water system engineers, engaged them, hired them to work with the Department of Health to design a system that would remove this, this PFAS from the water completely. Again, first of its kind in the country. So we were treading a, a new ground here and, and we had, it took us two years to design a system and, and buy the materials and install it at the elementary school. And, and that's what we've done. It went online in, in November, early November. So these were the tests we've taken. We were required quarterly testing, as I said earlier, and, and these are the actual results of the tests on a, on a quarterly basis. And you can see the most important thing for me is this last one. That's tested, so it showed no, zero PFA or PFOS in our water. So it's not detectable by their, by our testing systems. The other on the right, I wanted to show the graph of the PFAS and PFA and, and the, the amounts. But more importantly, that those, the red line on the top, that's a, that's the threshold for when it, that's a maximum contamination level. That's a threshold for when the Department of Health thinks that the water's not, not great. Okay? There's 10, the, the, the green line below, if it tests above 10 parts per trillion, we have to take action. And as you can see, our first test came in above 10, so we took action. And now you can see the results that, that we have a first of its kind water filtration system in our elementary school. I want to show you, I made this. So this is what it looks like. This is what it's like. This is the flow. So water comes in from the well. It goes through a sediment filter. That's the first filter on the left there. Then we, there's a, a testing portal there. Then it goes up and through three large carbon filtration tanks. The water has to be exposed to the carbon for between 10 and 15 minutes to remove that PFAS from it. It's like a, a sponge that absorbs the, the chemicals out of the water. And that, those three first tanks were designed to completely eliminate PFAS. The second three that it also goes through is redundant backup system so that when PFAS was able to start slipping through that first three tanks, then we can, then the second three will pick it up. That's why we test in between. So as soon as we start finding PFAS in that second test point, that's when we know that carbon on the first three tanks is spent. So now we, when, now we need to, to replace that carbon. And so it'll start absorbing the, the chemicals again. Then the water goes through the second redundant set of tanks, even though it's not needed. And then after that, it goes through a UV filter and, and goes through a chlorinator. These were put in prior, those are, those, the sediment filter, the UV filter and the chlorinator were in there before we put the system in. Then it goes into a storage tank and then it gets pumped into the school. That's our water system. I drew this, so this is not really what it looks like. This, this is what it looks like. So those are the actual tanks that, that we installed and that's the basement on the right there. That's what those, those six tanks look like and that's the, the copper piping between.
I just want to quickly compliment Carrie, who is our, our in-house master plumber and HVAC technician, as well as our other custodial and ground staff. You could see them obviously lowering those massive tanks into the basement of the elementary school, which resembles a little bit of a dungeon. And just considering the size of that and look at the picture on the right, how tightly those tanks, you could see four of them in the picture. There's actually six that continue around the corner there. Just how tight of a squeeze and how much work went into plumbing each of these in place to make them work as they do, as they're described in the diagram. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Carrie. It probably would have cost us two or three times as much to outsource the work that he was able to do as our in-house plumber, so.
Thank you, thank you. That's gone, my next slide, some of that stuff? So the, yeah, the, the cost, the, the initial capital, this is $100,000 in design. We had to pay the engineers to design it, material costs, the, the carbon and the tanks and the copper and all that stuff. And the installation, that's what we paid Carrie is, is included in that. We got building aid on it of $66,300. So it really didn't cost us $100,000. It cost us, do that math, $3,000.
$3,700.
And we did in-source this, material purchases and the installation. If we had bid this out, as Dr. Luff just said, I think it would have, it would have cost us $200,000 or $300,000. We, we don't know because we didn't bid it out. We purchased it in, in-house and installed it in-house. Estimated ongoing expenses of this system, this is the unfortunate part here for the budget, is that quarterly testing, now that we, we have to test in those three spots and the first test is going to come back with PFAS in it, so we're going to have to retest there. And we're going to have to do six tests every quarter at $375 a test. That's a discounted rate because we're a municipality and we do a lot of testing. But that's, it's going to be $9,000 a year to test now, where we would have just, just had to pay for one quarterly test prior to that. And now the annual, this is the, another, I, I wish I, I could get you better numbers on this, but annual spent carbon removal and disposal, when that, this is new, right? So we don't know, we're estimating that that carbon is going to absorb so much PFAS in about a year that will stop absorbing and then we're going to have to start, have to change that, that carbon out. We're going to have to remove it. And you can't just take it and, and put it in a dumpster because it's going to be hazardous waste. And the, the, the companies that, that take care of that harbor, that, that waste haven't dealt with this stuff before. So they're going to want to see a sample before they give us a quote on how much it's going to be to remove that spent carbon and then incinerate it. They have to burn it at a very high temperature to make sure that it doesn't stay and, and go back into the atmosphere and then, then fall back down in rainwater. And then the, the tanks to, to add the new carbon is going to be about $4,000. So I'm just, this is a real wild estimate of three, $33,000 to $50,000 per year ongoing for as long as that PFAS, it comes out positive in that first test site. The only other solution to eliminate this cost in, in the next 20, 50 years would be to, to drill a new well and, and hope that that new well came up with, with water with no PFAS. But that's, that's risky. But we're, we're looking at that, obviously. We, you know, this is going to end up being a lot of money over, over time.
David, can I ask you a question on this?
Of course, yeah.
The, is the plan that, or is the estimate, I guess we don't really know based on whatever the, the numbers count to be from the testing, is it, is the estimate, the, the idea that you'll be having to replace all six at once or do them in the first three that, during fail, leaving the next three so that they're rotating? Or do we think all six will need to be done every year?
Dr. Luff and I had about a dozen conversations about, about this, trying to figure that out exactly and talking to the water engineer, water system engineer. And we're not, we, we don't know whether it's just, when a company comes to remove the spent carbon and, and their mobilization cost to do that and then, then put the new carbon in, it might just be, be, make better sense to just do it all at one time. What we're also concerned about is with the school won't have water when we do that switch out. So that's going to have to be timed for when the school's closed. And as you guys know, the school's never closed. So, so we're, we're gonna, we'll have time to plan it right and to mobilize ahead of time. And we think we can do it maybe over a weekend or something. So it's something that's, we're discussing and really thinking hard about is how to handle that.
Because it's really, at this point, there's no way with, even with the water engineer to estimate how long that really will take. I mean, if, if you're, if we're, you know, if the aquifer happens to be in an angry mood, right? And it's, it's throwing off a lot more as, as opposed to a lot less of these forever materials, then we might be going into the supplemental filters earlier than we think.
Right.
Or if it's less, we might be able to get through two years.
Exactly. We don't know. And yeah, we don't know, this is so new. We, we don't know how long. It could just go away. I mean, that's, I will still, obviously, that, those testing, those quarterly testing at each site will, will be recorded. So we'll, we'll get a sense, right? That first testing portal will say, oh, okay, well, it's down. So we're, and over time, we'll get a better understanding of how this will work. But yeah, those, those are good questions that we're, we're thinking hard about. Don't have great answers.
To summarize, definitely maybe. In an ideal world, the first time we, we find any contamination after the first three, right? It's the day after school let out and we could quickly mobilize the carbon company. In that case, it would make sense just to do the first three because we would know the, the second three, the redundant three are still pristine, right? But let's say the first time the test comes out to find some contaminants is in December. Well, that doesn't really work well for us. So we're going to have to utilize the next three tanks to get us through the remainder of the school year to get to a point where, not that our building's ever shut down with ESY and other programs, but to find at least a time that makes some sense to replace the carbon, in which case we'd have to do all six. So there's many variables that we're considering when that time actually comes.
Breaking new ground in Putnam Valley.
I think we should start a bottling station.
Oh, yeah.
Sell it.
We, we definitely, I'm very confident that we have some of the cleanest water coming out of the end of that system that, that you can find.
Well, we created our own sanitizer, right?
We, we did, you know, yes.
So. Is Putnam Springs too close?
You remember that?
It's like a copyright.
So now that's it, that's the water. I'll move on to, unless you have other questions about the water, you want to stay there. Happy to just stop at the end of each section and take questions or you can save them for the end too. HVAC and electricity is the next section here. And in, in here, for, for the budget impacts, I, I wanted to... And in here, for the budget impacts, I wanted to analyze the impact of the energy performance contract that we put into place five years ago now, was fully implemented in 2019, that's when it all came online. And we've been very anxious to see the results of that. And as you can tell, I'm a data nerd here, so I can't wait to get, to get the results. So I'm going to look, we're going to look together at, at how that impacted our energy use and therefore our budget since that implementation of the EPC and then what I see ongoing. And also going to look for savings, given, given that EPC in place, I'm still looking at ways to, to save electricity and oil without making people cold in the winter and uncomfortable. So, and then we'll look ahead for some future opportunities that we have. So this is the elementary school oil use. You can see back in 2014, fifteen through eighteen, when they, when we started the implementation of the EPC and put the, and just to remind everyone at the elementary school, the, the EPC was windows and doors in there. It was putting a geothermal ground source heat pump system in place that used the, you know, geothermal to, to, to replace some of the oil burning use demand in the school and changing out all the lights to LED lights. So that's, those are the main things. We did a bunch of stuff, but those are the main things there and the building management system. So the oil use was, I was anxious to see this, we used to burn, depending on how cold the winter was, you know, about forty thousand gallons a year over the winter there. And you could see in 2019 it dipped and that's when we were fully in place, down to below thirty thousand. So, you know, about a twelve thousand gallon per year savings in oil, primarily by the geothermal installation. You could see we jumped up a little in twenty-one and you're going to see that on the electric side too. And my simple analysis of why it jumped up a little bit, and I think it makes sense, is during the pandemic, our main concern was ventilation and airflow. And we had windows open in January, all of them. So that's why our heating, we spent more and we did more electricity there. So, and then I projected out what the oil use next year, this whole full year is going to be. As you know, oil prices are volatile, this just shows what we paid over the years. We buy oil again on state contract, we get the lowest possible price you could get it at, but it's still, you know, three seventy-five gallon versus it was a dollar twenty-nine in twenty fifteen. So, you know, talk about impacts on the budget, you know, forty thousand gallons now down to, down to less than thirty, you know, every dollar is thirty thousand, is, you know, is thirty thousand dollars in oil, every dollar in oil price is that. So, so since the EPC, this sums it up. Our, our winter oil use was in 2014 through eighteen, averaged thirty-nine thousand gallons winter. And then in 2019 through twenty-three, we averaged twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand. The, so the average reduction was just over ten thousand and the savings at our current rate we're paying annually is forty thousand dollars. So that's nice, right? This is the good news stuff. And so we're, our efforts for additional savings here and Kerry, who Dr. Luff mentioned before, and I have been meeting often and with Ray, head custodian at the elementary school, to, to look at serious ways to reduce the oil consumption there. You know, whether it's occupancy sensors, so we, the, unless the sensor sees someone moving around there, the heat's not going to be on. Zoning the building so that we're only heating the building after four o'clock when it's being used, the section that's being used and the rest of the building, we kind of cut the heat off there or we shut it down lower. So we really think making moves like that at the elementary school and here on this campus, that we're going to have significant energy use savings to come.
Just give everybody a blanket.
Putnam Valley sweatshirts. So, so this is our electricity usage. And, and so this is important because as most of you know, this campus here has used no oil for over twenty years. We've had geothermal as our source here for that. The, the boards of education and Mr. Paul Lee, you know, pushed for this to happen in the late nineteen nineties here and we are reaping the rewards of that every year. And, but the, a geothermal system uses electricity, okay? Basically what it does is it, it, it's a HVAC system, it's fans and pumps that move water around, very rudimentary explanation here, but moves water and air around the buildings and, and that, those are electric. So we're basically heating and cooling using the, the ground underneath, five hundred feet down as the source of the energy, but then using electricity to move everything around and heat and cool the buildings, but both heats and cools. So electricity is a big component here, okay? So our, our electricity usage, this is district-wide in the, you know, from 2014 through nineteen was about three million kilowatts per year. And, and then you can see when the EPC was implemented, again, here on this campus, we were already fully geothermal. Our, our energy performance contract here really changed out all the lights, put a different, a new building management system in for HVAC, which allows us to control the heat and all that. It's a little complicated. And, and so that's, those are the main thrusts of the EPC here. And, but we reduced our, our electricity by a million kilowatts. You can see, this is the evidence right here. You know, and in 2021, 22, you can see a little spike there when all the windows are open because of the pandemic, but we're back down to about two million, two million kilowatts. If we can, if, if we're right and we're going to successfully implement some of those other strategies we talked about with the heat and the building management system, we think we can reduce that by another five to 10%.
David, can I ask you a question about this?
Sure.
The electricity usage, is that net from solar or does that include solar?
Right, so this is after the solar, right? So the solar, it nets it out. So this is the total, our total demand on, on the grid.
So our, but our payment for electricity to an electrical, to NICEG is less than this, these kilowatts?
No, the opposite.
Okay.
This includes the solar.
Gotcha.
Okay. So these are the costs. Over time, you can see it was about four hundred thousand dollars prior and now, now we're down well under three hundred thousand. And you see that spike in twenty-one, twenty-two. One thing I will mention here is that we did, we, we had, unlike oil prices, the electricity cost for us because we locked in about five years ago on a contract, we had, we locked in at a very low rate. That rate, so that's the same rate you'll see, it was, I'm not going to get into the exact numbers here because it's, it's a little complicated, but, but that rate was, was in play from fourteen through the present. That contract is up this November. So Jill and I have been talking about, when do we lock in? We're playing the energy market game, I'm watching energy rates and they have been dropping dramatically lately. They've been dropping, we're right now at a fourteen-month low in electricity costs and, and you have the contract there. We were talking with the person today about locking in early, just even though it's November first, locking in early to a rate that will keep us sustained for another three years. It's not even close to what we were, we were, it's way higher. So keep that in mind. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute here. So the electricity use since the EPC, you see over three million, down to just over two million kilowatts hours, the reduction of almost a million. And in annual savings at that current pricing, at the lower pricing, is a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars per year in, in savings from that energy performance contract. Efforts for additional savings I just, I already talked about. And here at the bottom, these are pretty close. I think our, our rates, all in with the delivery and supply and, and that, and we're going to be able to lock them in at a price that's about four cents per kilowatt hour over what we're paying now. Don't hold me to that, it could be three, it could be five, but every cent is critical when you're talking about a million, right? So kilowatts. And so based on that alone, that, that four cents increase in two million kilowatts, you can see an eighty, eighty thousand dollar annual increase in our budget. That's without doing anything. So sustainable energy equals savings. Our annual savings since the EPC, this just sums it up, a hundred and seventy-two thousand on electricity and oil savings, these are annual savings and the total annual savings from that energy performance contract is over two hundred thousand dollars so far. The higher energy costs go, the more we save, which is weird. And so this is, this, because I'm a data nerd, this is a really interesting graphic for us to look at. This is the energy utilization index, this is the thousand BTUs per square foot per year. It really kind of levels a playing field to see how efficient your, your school or your building is and how it operates. And you can see each school broken down, Con Ed Solutions, when they, when they looked at our EPC, did those numbers in 2017. And the twenty, twenty-three numbers are the ones since, since the EPC, obviously, that's present day. And so the, the blue is electricity and the, the yellow is propane and, and the, the red is, is the oil, right? So the high school and middle school prior to the EPC were among the most energy efficient and from a sustainability level of any schools, is why I've always been touting this, like we're way, like you can't believe how advanced we are compared to other districts in the country in, in energy efficiency because of those geothermal wells that we put in. And that's why we don't have those red bars here on ours. So we're, the national average for schools is eighty, eighty-three point one on this index. Since the EPC, you can see the high school and middle school are well below half of the national, national average. So that's twice as efficient as, as the average school in, in the country. And the elementary school, since the EPC, we did get it down to, to about average, okay? But district-wide, we kill it, okay? From an energy sustainability level.
David, where do we stand compared to where Con Ed expected us to be and they gave us a promise of what our savings was going to be? Where do we stand on that? I mean, are we better than?
We're not there. I'm going to get them in to look at what they promised and why. So what they, I did have them in here and then again, the pandemic kind of, kind of screwed us up a little bit in, in our analysis, but they didn't, they would tell, tell us now that they did not promise, they'd promised that we'd save that if we operated exactly like they said we would operate. You know, we'd have a high temperature of sixty-eight. We can't operate at sixty-eight, we have to operate at seventy-one, otherwise everybody complains about it being cold. So that's just one example. So we're not there, we're, we're about a hundred thousand dollars a year short. One of the reasons why I've been meeting with Kerry to look and analyze what the heck we're doing here to try to, try to drive those, those down further. But the bottom line is we're not meeting them. I mean, it's good, two hundred thousand plus, but three hundred thousand is what we, we expected, okay? What we wanted, what they, what they kind of promised, kind of. So what I'd like to do in the future is eliminate that red. Anyway, what's on the horizon? This is a sunrise in Putnam Valley. These are things we're thinking about. Uh-oh, okay. So we have engaged some energy engineer folks to look at the elementary school and see what expanding, what would take to expand the geothermal system at, at the elementary school to take care of the whole school and eliminate those oil burners altogether. Because those oil burners we have down there are inefficient and old and are going to need to be replaced, right? And so the cost of replacing them with, we would never do oil again, that's, that just, they just don't do that anymore, it's so inefficient. But for the propane-fired boiler or something would be north of a million dollars. A geothermal expansion, that they think we need sixty wells, sixty additional wells, we have twenty-seven now, we need sixty additional wells. Some of the infrastructure is fine, but we would also need to upgrade some of the internal, inside the elementary school infrastructure to accommodate geothermal and get rid of that oil. So this is, these are, these are budget numbers that are kind of, this is what they told us, about four million dollars. I said four to five because things go up, right? And I want to be conservative here. But if we were able to do that and put, and have only geothermal there, it would get rid of the twenty-eight thousand gallons of oil we use every year, we would use zero, right? And it would save about a hundred thousand dollars, depending on the price of oil, it could be two hundred thousand, you know, five years from now, a year. And it will reduce the impact of volatile energy markets. You know, other districts, when these, these oil prices spiked all over the place, they had hundreds of thousands of dollars in changes in their budgets. We, you know, it was bad, we had, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollar spikes, but, but volatile energy prices, we, we won't be as vulnerable to those if we get rid of the oil there. And something that when, when people call, they call me to talk about geothermal because we're known to, to have this and have used it for over twenty years, you know, twenty-three years now. And I, this is one of the great benefits, you know, if you're a homeowner, you say, wow, the payback is forever on that, why would I do geothermal? But for a school district, we're going to be, we're going to be around for a while, you know? And, and geothermal wells, they think last seventy-five to a hundred years, they're very simple things, they're, they're just wells that go down in the ground encased in concrete, I mean, that's, that's what they are. So a geothermal system using that energy from the earth is a long-term deal, right? And, you know, very important also is that it all but eliminates fossil fuel emissions from our entire district. It would put Putnam Valley schools, which are already at the leading edge, way in advance, be one of the most sustainable school districts in the country from an energy standpoint. And, and I think that's something we could be proud of, right? And we could be a model for, for other schools and other districts. And because of that gap between the million and four million dollars you see up there, we understand that this is not something we can do tomorrow and we can't just sign up and do that and we don't have the money. So Jill and Dr. Luff and I have been investigating some state and federal funding opportunities. I was reading today about that Inflation Reduction Act has a lot of money for sustainable energy and one of the, one of the examples of that is ground source heat pumps that they, they want to, they want to pay for and we're going to apply for that, okay? To, to try to help fund this for us. But this is what we're looking at. Another thing, you know, when we built that wellness center there, we didn't have money in the budget to put solar on the roof, I wanted to, we couldn't do it. They would have to shrink it down to be a little tiny wellness center, we didn't want that. So, but anyway, we had them design the roof so it could accommodate solar because we knew it would be something in the future to be an opportunity. I had some folks that did the solar at I had some folks that did the solar at the, for the EPC, look at the, this, and I got these numbers today. These aren't as sharp as, they, they, obviously, we could get more serious about them and the numbers would tighten up. But we could get a solar array on that roof, the fourteen thousand square foot roof that would produce about two hundred and fifty thousand KW and reduce the demand from the grid by another twelve percent. Save about thirty-five thousand dollars a year at, at the rates where, where we plan, we're going to lock in at, at those new rates. And, and the estimated project cost is six hundred and eighty thousand for that array. The ICT, the, this is the federal, and then the state rebates that they have are about three hundred and thirty thousand on that. So, it would be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense to get us that, that thirty-five thousand dollar a year savings. We're, Jill and I just talked about this today, so this is very early on. We don't know what kind of building aid would be on that. We, we're investigating it. But just preliminarily, I, I think it's something that, that looks really good, looks like a really good opportunity based on those rebates that, that are out there now.
So, Yorktown can point their solar panels at us. We can point our solar panels at them.
You guys should just buy, buy that solar farm next door, and we'd all be good. We'd get rid of it all.
We could say that zero trees were cut down in the installation of our solar panels.
So, yeah, we're investigating funding opportunities there as well because that, that Inflation Reduction Act money might help us there too. We don't know. But we're looking at it hard. So, another, the, the last thing we're going to look at here is the transportation infrastructure. Because New York State Governor Hochul has mandated that new bus purchases be zero emission EVs starting in 2027, and then our whole fleet needs to be EVs by 2035. So, it's something I'm looking at because we need to plan. So, our current transportation infrastructure, for those who don't know, is that we have a hybrid system. We have the district-owned buses and, and district employees to drive them, but we also contract out some of our, our runs to, right, at this point, it's Orange County Transit, but to a, to a, to a, to a contract bus company. We do a hundred and ten runs a day, fifty-five in the morning, fifty-five in the afternoon. And then we have the after-school stuff, which, which varies. All, all the vehicles for both the contract bus company and our own vehicles are all stored on the elementary school campus. In conjunction with the town, our fuel is, is purchased at state contract pricing. Again, the lowest prices we could buy the, the gas and the diesel for. But, and, and our, our buses are refueled at the town highway department. We, we partner with them. So, that's, that's what it looks like right now. So, that's what we have to deal with here. Now, people, the first thing people ask about when you talk about electric cars is, wow, what about the range? What about, so there's range anxiety. That's what we call it. And so, I looked at the, the actual runs and, and looked at our, our new software and, and able to, to very easily get this data on, on what our, each run looks like. And, and you can see most, most of, almost half of them are less than ten miles. And, and you can see that, that array there. And so, the large buses, the big ones you see, that they generally do the four less than twenty mile trips. That's about eighty-five of them, of the trips. And, and obviously, that's, that's eighty miles. So, in a hundred and ten mile range, you're, you're good. You won't even have to charge in the middle of the day. And the smaller buses, we, which aren't even available yet, but they are going to have a, a long, higher range. And the, the battery technology is advancing very quickly. We're not buying these things tomorrow. And we think the range is going to increase. So, that's to just cool the range anxiety. Now, current obstacles, like the little electric lightning bolt there. Got it? To EV transition, district-owned and gas card vehicles that we have are three large buses, thirteen small buses. Those are the, you know, twenty-two passenger deals, and then two minivans. And obviously, a huge obstacle is those big buses cost about four hundred thousand dollars right now. A, a, a gas bus costs about a hundred, a hundred and ten. Small buses, we've been looking into it. They're not available to purchase yet, so we don't even know how much they're going to be. And the EV, and the minivans aren't available to purchase either. We can get a hybrid one, but the all-electric ones aren't available yet. So, that's, that's an obstacle.
I'd imagine a lot of this will change when, like, if, if they go according to schedule, all the postal, uh, transportation's going to be electric as well, in theory. So, I mean, there's obviously going to be that much demand for charging stations and battery technology because I believe that, you know, the mail runs are a lot longer than a bus run would be.
Yeah, my guess is they're going to, I mean, I just, I, I'm really into this stuff. I, I see, I mean, there's cars now that are at three hundred and fifty mile range, and, and it's just, it's happening so fast. I'm not really even worried about it. But in, like you said, I think with the, you know, once, once the supply chain stuff gets resolved, I, I think we're going to be looking at much lower price. And the demand goes up and the, I, I was on a, a call with the manufacturers of buses and, and about EVs, and, and they are, they're moving forward full steam ahead, and their production is ramping up like crazy, which I think will bring the price down and the range up. So, I think we're going to be in better shape a couple of years from now to, to really see this, this happening more quickly. But right now, these are, these are some of the obstacles.
And I, I think the bigger problem is the infrastructure to support this increased need for electricity throughout the, the states from Maine to California, you know? It's not there. It's not there. It took to the late, oh, I'm sorry, the mid nineteen thirties to have enough gas stations to power the automobile to make a trip across the country. To the nineteen thirties, and, and the car was developed in nineteen oh five, nineteen ten. That's what we're looking at. Right now, we don't have the infrastructure within the electric grid to power all these cars once they're going. I, I, I think the state is way ahead of themselves and are not taking into account these very apparent obstacles. But that's the state's wisdom all the time.
Well, I imagine it's a goal more than a reality at this point.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Because we're looking at a power station. I mean, we'll need a substation of our own.
Exactly.
To, to power this many.
Yep.
You know?
My next bullet point, right? Electricity infrastructure in, on our campus is not adequate to accommodate charging needs. So, we, we did have the electrical engineers come because I'm crazy about planning and I want to know what it's going to be. I want to know whether we can handle it. And you're right, we can't, right now, right? So, we could handle our own buses and charge them, our own fleet, but the contract bus company needs to charge their, their buses. So, we couldn't do the fifty-something vehicles with the power that we have now according to their current, their analysis. We would have to bring, and that would be the big expense for us, is bringing the, the, the electricity onto the campus at the elementary school. Once we get it there, you know, from, from NICE, once we get it there, then, you know, the, the charging stations, I don't, I'm not worried about that infrastructure. The charging is, that, that technology is advancing so fast that we're not going to need a hundred charging stations. We're probably going to, it's going to be like filling up. You can fill up like in twenty minutes now. And I would imagine you're going to be able to fill an electric bus in, in, in like, you know, five or ten minutes with a charge. So, it'll be more like a gas fill-up than, than sitting there charging overnight. Anyway, that's, and, and again, that charging technology, that's why I just, I just talked about that. So, obviously, the capital to make this transition is not available. So, you know, the state sometimes puts out mandates and doesn't fund them. We've heard about that before, but we'll, we'll see what happens here, right? And we'll, we'll, with, with Jill and, and Dr. Left, look at all opportunities out there for funding to help us. And, and I'm also looking at, you know, maybe we can phase it in, you know? But this is, this is just a, a real first glance at, at what it would take for us and, and what it looks like for Putnam Valley to get to the mandated all-electric fleet by 2035. And so, the benefits of EV buses are that there's zero emissions, which is healthier for the, the students. They, they're not breathing in, in exhaust and healthy for the environment, obviously. There's also significant fuel savings, cost savings. Electric buses, vehicles are, cost about eighty-five percent less to operate from a fuel standpoint than, than a gas or diesel vehicle. That's just, those are the numbers. And there's no, the maintenance costs are significantly reduced. There's no fluids. There's no oil changes. There's none of that in there, right? So, the, the maintenance costs will be significant. It's really changing tires and, and brakes once in a while. And, yeah, so, so that's it. That's, any, any questions that haven't been asked already?
Sorry.
Dave, you can really tell your passion's coming through on this, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's nice to hear you're talking about this versus filters and cleaning supplies and things like that.
Yeah. And you know what? I'll tell you that because the, the staff that we had that I mentioned on my first slide is, is so good and competent and cares so much here that it allows me to, to have the time. I'm not putting out fires and, and has, have the time to really dive into this and, and, and help the district make smart decisions. So, yeah, thank you.
And is that your own photo, the horizon, the sunrise?
Yes, it is.
Very nice.
So, thank you, guys.
Very detailed. Thank you.
I just want to, again, thank you. Obviously, passion for sustainability comes through. And despite my snickers every time you talk to me about EV buses, it evidenced the amount of work and thought that went into this presentation. So, thank you. So, our final presentation this evening, I'd like to invite Jill Figarella back up. She's going to talk a little bit about the exemptions that were not part of our hearing before the meeting.
Is it on the desktop? Oh, are you going to help me out for a second? Is it, is it in one of these? So, Jeanette, I added something to this slide here because I was disappointed that I couldn't pull that up before. So, there is a link now there. It, it goes through all of the, you know, criteria, and it has all of the information about what people have to turn in to, you know, to fill out the application and get the approval. So, you know, it's linked there now. So, okay, all right. So, the second half of this is going to be about our other types of school tax exemptions. So, you know, in addition to the senior exemption, there's many other, I'm going to say many because there's quite a few of other types that we can apply to school taxes. And people can be eligible for. It tries to reach out to different, you know, groups and not just, you know, to one group, give those exemptions. So, right now, we have, and I, I think I mentioned this earlier, the disabled exemption runs on the same scale that the senior exemption is, is utilizing. And it's basically the same logic and formula. So, I can just give a little bit of background here. Historically, both the age at all and the disabled exemption have been adopted using the same scale. There are nine, nine eligible homeowners. You can't have both. You can't have the senior citizen exemption or the age at all exemption if you have the disabled, but you get one or the other if you are eligible. So, right now, we have one point two million dollars of exemptions coming off of our tax rolls. If those scales were to increase to that first level that the age at all exemption is being recommended to move to, it would bring us to one point five million. It's an impact, tax rate impact of about two cents per thousand dollars of assessment or eight dollars on an average home. The exemption, again, shifts dollars away from the taxable value and has an impact on the tax rate. But you can see in our particular situation right now with nine people getting it, that's the impact. The next one is the volunteer exemption. That currently allows for a three thousand dollar exemption from the assessed value. And a three thousand dollar exemption is about seventy-five dollars for whoever is eligible for that. In an effort to encourage eligible volunteer participation, the governor has proved an increase for the volunteer exemption. And, and quite, it's, it's a pretty big, significant increase. But again, it doesn't have a huge impact. It's ten percent of the assessed value, so much higher than three thousand dollars per person. Right now, we only have ten volunteers in the whole town that get it. It removes, again, thirty-three thousand dollars from the taxable value currently. This would increase based on those ten people to three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars coming off the assessed values, or two cents, actually similar to the other one. So, again, eight dollars per household on an average home worth four hundred thousand dollars. I just mentioned the STAR because I wanted to make sure, since we were talking about senior exemptions and other types of exemptions, that there are the rest of the community who don't qualify for these types of things will, could qualify for basic STAR. There's also a lot of information you would need to know to see if you qualified for that. The income of, for enhanced for seniors, I think mentioned earlier, was around eighty-two thousand. Our resident who came up and spoke, but it's really, it's ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars or less they would qualify, the seniors. We have four hundred and four seniors who are eligible in the town now. We have over eleven thousand citizens in the town, but five thousand households, okay? So, if that gives you any kind of idea. I'm very surprised at the low number of basic STAR exemptions. It's twelve hundred and sixty-one out of the five thousand households that we have. And of course, you know, it has to be primary residents, but it's still a very low number considering, you know, how many. And you have to, I think the income, it has to be over five hundred thousand to not qualify. So, I still think it's a low number. So, remind everyone to apply for exemptions if you think you might be entitled. Moving forward.
Jill, can I ask you one of the disabled one? So, if we're seeing that we have nine eligible homeowners, that would be combined with the, if, if, if we adopt the same as the age at all, there's no, not double exempting. It would be the same, it would be set up as the same exemption.
Correct. You mean the same.
Well, meaning, because right now, there, nobody can double that now either, correct?
Right. You've got to have either one or the other in those, in those two categories. You can have STAR. You could have the volunteer exemption. You could have other types of exemptions in addition to, but the disabled and the senior one are one or the other.
And they're currently on the same scale?
Yes. Okay. So, now I want to talk about the veterans exemption. That's the more complicated scenario. One, so I have a separate slide for that. There are three types of veterans exemptions. There's the veterans of war, the combat veterans, and the disabled veterans. So, you can either have been participating in a conflict that qualifies, if you were in a conflict that you saw combat in, or you have, you're a veteran that became disabled as a result of that. And these are the arenas that you would have had to been in during those times. And so, there's, there's a lot of criteria that has to be met. Here is my analysis of, which I hope we can see, sort of. So, here, this yellow highlight is actually what our levels are for the wartime, the combat, and the disability. If you, if you applied for it, you have, during any of those, you know, you saw any of those conflicts and you applied for it and you were eligible for wartime veteran, it would be a twelve thousand dollar exemption from your taxable assessed value. If you saw combat, it would be the twelve thousand plus the eight thousand, so you'd have combat, it would be the twelve thousand plus the eight thousand, so you'd have twenty thousand from your exa, for your exemption. And then, the disability exemption is a little different. That's in addition, but it's up to forty thousand. So, it depends on your rating as your, of your, of your disability. And that's given to you by the War Department when you're released from your, from your post as your, as a military participant. Okay. So, for our town, we have a hundred and forty-three wartime veterans. And the amount of money that comes off the tax rolls and gets shifted onto the other residents is one point seven million dollars of assessed value. There are, and I'm sorry, ninety-two combat veterans, a shift of one point eight million dollars. And there are forty-eight disabled veterans with a savings of, now, it could be up to one point nine, but for us, because I said there's a disability rating, we see about eighty-six percent of a hundred percent of that, which is one point six million. So, our total exempt value right now for our veterans who have applied is five point two million dollars. If I move this over a little. So, our tax rate is twenty-two eighty-five, twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand dollars of assessment. If this exemption were to go to the next level, which is the, and I'm just going to give this one example. These are all, obviously, different levels that are are eligible, I mean, are available for the board to decide whether they want to change this or leave it the way it is. The next level, it would be fifteen thousand dollar savings for wartime vet, plus ten if they saw combat, and then a percentage of the fifty thousand up to fifty thousand. So, based on the eighty-six percent for the disability, that would give us a six point five million dollar exempt value from the tax rolls, and it would take the tax rate up nine, nine cents. Well, nine cents on a four hundred thousand dollar home equates to about thirty-six dollars. So, again, depends on the value of the home, how much of an increase it would mean for, for someone.
Jill, when you're talking about the exempt amounts, is the, for instance, in the current example, it's one point seven million and one point eight million for vets of war and combat. Is, is that one point eight million the summation of the addition, or it is actually three point Garva?
It's actually three, it's-
Three point five?
Four point five?
Could they be combined?
Yes. You have to, hey, add them together. And then-
Then the one point nine.
Right, so five point two million, right. Okay. So, these are all the different levels of exemption that are possible. And you can't, it's not à la carte. You can't choose one from this column and one from this column and one from here. It's straight across. So, it goes up to two hundred. And this is the highest, seventy-five thousand, fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. And right now, we are at the basic level. Again, it is a shift in tax to the other taxpayer, something to consider. None of these things are on the table for decision making. Nobody, I mean, there are school districts that make changes to these schedules. We wanted to talk about all the exemptions. As soon as you start talking about exemptions and school taxes, people want to know more information. They want to know what else is available for them. I'm just bringing it up because I know the other school districts surrounding us are all talking about it. They're all talking about it at their board meetings. They're making decisions about it. There are, I can tell you that I don't have a lot, I know I, I wanted to have information and say, oh, they did this and this, they did that. And nobody, everybody's trying to decide what they want to do, okay? I think Brewster is the only school district right now that has made a decision on anything other than the senior citizen exemption that we spoke about earlier. And they just did it this past week. What they were going to do, they're moving up one level, oh, and each year for the next three years. That's what they've decided on the veterans. On the volunteer exemption, most of the districts are going up to the ten percent. On the senior exemption, they're all, the ones that are moving are moving up gradually, the first year, not the second and third, as suggested. It was just gradual. We don't know what the actual impact is going to be, and people want to see what that's going to be before they make that move. I got to get out of this screen. So, that's really all I have, unless you have questions. I just wanted to discuss the exemptions and see if you have any questions about them, or if you want to take any into consideration. I would say that I am recommending that we do the disabled exemption if you're going to consider doing the senior citizen exemption, because those sliding scales in every town that has them have the same scales for both, because of, because of the fact that you either get one or the other. So, that would be my, my only suggestion.
Yeah, I was going to ask you whether we can schedule a future public hearing on the disability exemption.
Yeah, we would have to schedule a, a future hearing. We can't just decide to add that one in because we've already-
That would have to be after people are supposed to file, though, because we don't have another meeting.
Well, it's okay. I spoke with assessor. I spoke with assessor in more than one town. I spoke with the Putnam County Department of Finance. It's not that it's okay to file after. They still have to file before March first, before the deadline. They will be slight, you know, lenient with the collection of the paperwork if there is something missing at that time. Regardless, you know, the levels can be set and then they make their determination. So, it's not made on March first, but they need to have your application in hand before the deadline, which is March first.
But they could apply, and they would get the lower rate unless we changed our rate.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And these are never, obviously, not locked in stone because we're already making a change to at least one of them. We're looking to make a change in one of them. And if we don't consider or even vote on any of the other, the veterans or the, we could do it another year, right?
Oh, yeah.
Which is what we did with the veterans exemption when it first became available four years ago, five years ago, whatever it was.
Quite a while ago, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like that lost some of time.
I don't want to say, I think sixteen, fifteen or sixteen was the year. I have it in my folder.
So, we, we, we kicked it because, again, the, became available through the state, and it was, you know, spring, and we didn't have time to be able to consider the impacts. So, we put it to the next year, and that's when we put it in place.
Right.
Okay.
Two thousand and fourteen. Yeah, and then I think they added co-ops in two, two thousand and sixteen. Yeah. There was a change along the way, but it was very, it was minor. It would, didn't apply to everybody.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, do we have to make a decision to put it on, to announce a hearing?
Well, is it a-
Or to tell, or to publicize a hearing, or?
We don't need to decide now. We just need to, we wanted to provide enough basic information so the board can make an informed decision as to whether they want to now schedule a meeting to discuss any of those additional exemptions any further.
As far as timing is-
You mean for the senior exemption, Barbara?
For the disability exemption.
Oh, the, no, okay.
For the other ones.
Not for the other, really just for that one. I, I really do agree that that, that that should be linked.
We could have a hearing before the next meeting, and it would be in time for them to collect the information, if you wanted to do that. Yep.
Well, that's, that's what I think we should do. I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. We could do it before the next meeting, but it would be after. But if people had applied, they could, then the new rates would just be-
And then they, you know, if whatever the timing does or doesn't work out, then they'll get it the next year, but it'll be in place.
Right.
If we decide to go that route.
Right.
And I think, you know, at the very least, we could put it for a hearing and for the next meeting for the-
The disability.
Disability clause, and then we could take it-
I really would have recommended putting it tonight, but I didn't realize that they went hand in hand until I started to do some more research. So, honestly, that's, that's how it came about like that. So.
Sam, do you agree for the next meeting, the hearing?
Yeah, for the next meeting. I wouldn't, I wouldn't call a special meeting. I agree with Joe, when you had said, Joe, that it can wait till next year.
It's March second, the next meeting, so it's not-
So, it's done.
No, right. It's after, it's, it's right when it's due, so.
Exactly.
Helen, what do you, you agree?
I'd wait.
Jeanette? To put it at the next meeting, have a hearing?
The disability.
The disability.
In March, yeah.
Yes?
Only that one.
Yeah.
I would say, only that one.
Yeah, only that one.
Only, right.
Okay.
Okay. So, then we're going to start with new business. Go ahead.
Creation of a one FTE supervisor special education position. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby creates a one point zero FTE supervisor special education position effective February tenth, twenty twenty-three, with terms and conditions of employment consistent with the collectively negotiated agreement between the district and the Putnam Valley administrators as per document number one thirty-nine twenty-three. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the probationary term dates for Nicole Dodona as follows. The board hereby appoints Nicole Dodona to a four-year probationary term as a point six social studies teacher and a point four special education teacher commencing on December tenth, twenty twenty, and terminating on December ninth, twenty twenty-four, in the tenure area of social studies and special education.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just to clarify, Ms. Dodona was with us that entire school year in a lead replacement position, but that position officially became vacated on that date. So, we're amending her resolution. So, essentially shifts her start date up six months, and hence her tenure date up the same six months.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved to set the following dates for action regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district budget vote and board election. May second of twenty twenty-three will be the final budget hearing at seven PM at the high school, school cafeteria. May sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, the budget vote and board election at the elementary school from six AM to nine PM.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved to authorize clerk of the district to arrange an intern to contracts for voting machines, voter, voter check-in poll, poll book systems, to have the necessary ballots printed, and to make other arrangements for the district budget vote and board elections scheduled for May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, as are necessary and appropriate. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Whereas section four sixty-seven of the real property tax law provides for a partial exemption from taxation on residential property owned by qualified owners at at least, oh, sorry, at least over sixty-five years of age. And whereas, the Board of Education has previously adopted a resolution extending the exemption prevent, provisions of section four sixty-seven of the real property tax law, which resolution has been amended from time to time. And whereas, the New York, the New York Governor Kathy Hochul signed NYSB three oh eight five into law, which increases the income eligibility limits for persons qualifying for the exemption. And whereas, the Board of Education desires to amend its previous resolutions to reflect the new income eligibility limits enacted under New York's SB thirty eighty-five. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby amend the income eligibility limits for the partial tax exemption previously authorized pursuant to section four sixty-seven of the real property tax law in accordance with the schedule listed on document number one thirty-five twenty-three. Attach to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Very quickly, the chart that shows the spread, it will demonstrate the three-year tier that, that we're adopting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And just wanted to confirm that. It's not going to be one shot. It's over three years.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd now like to open up the meeting for public comment on any topic. Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, my name's Dennis Perdicia. I'm actually a grad here from Putnam Valley High School. I graduated in twenty nineteen. I'm also a Regent graduate of Bingham University. I graduated this December. I have a sister here at the high school. I have a brother in the middle school. And I'm here today to really talk about the importance of building stronger alumni relations and potentially even an alumni association. But before I get into that, I want to talk a little bit about myself and my past experiences. As a freshman going into college, before my first semester had even began, I had the opportunity to attend an alumni panel. It was great. And through my networking there, before my first class even began, I got my first job on campus, and I got a job at a startup company nearby. My second semester, my freshman year, I continued to leverage my alumni network. I, through my alumni I met, he introduced me to a founder of a marketing consultancy. And this was my first ever internship opportunity. Through the next three years of college, I continued to leverage my networks and continued to leverage the alumni to obtain many more internships. My sophomore year, I leveraged my alumni to get an internship at Barclays, working in risk management. My junior year, I leveraged my network once again to secure an internship at Global Atlantic Financial Group where I worked on mergers and acquisitions and equity-like investments. And as a senior, when I looked to get a full-time job, I leveraged my alumni once again to obtain numerous full-time offers in, at a management consultancies. And soon in the coming months, I'll be starting my own career as a strategy consultant, you know. And now, looking back at the last four years, I realized the importance alumni and networks have had for me. And I think many of my peers feel the same, and I'm confident that many of you have also leveraged your professional networks throughout your long careers. You know, now standing here as an alumni of this high school, you know, I feel a sense of connection to my alma mater, to my community that helped shape me. I played football here. I wrestled here. I was part of the mock trial, we went to regionals. I was a lifeguard here, I remember, when Sam Oliverio came by and after I was cleaning the weeds at Roaring Brook. You know, I have a strong connection here, and I want to give back to my community, you know. And there's numerous ways an alumni association can do that, whether it's through scholarships, mentorship programs, internships, externships, even, for example, career guidance. There's so many different possibilities that stronger alumni relations can provide to past, present, and future graduates of this high school, you know. And now that I stand here today, and I've been back here in the community for the last several weeks, I've attended numerous board meetings, I've attended my sister's and brother's games, and I've tried to get in contact with high school administrators to find out how I can get involved as an alumni or as an alum, and I haven't really found any traction. And throughout my last few weeks here, I keep hearing these little inklings of an alumni association being here, and I find no information anywhere. I don't get emails. I don't find anything online. If I search on PVCSD.org, there's nothing related to alumni other than the annual luncheon. And I think it's a shame because the potential that stronger bonds between alumni and the community and current students can really benefit, you know, the whole district as a whole and create generational success, whether it's for alumni or whether it's for current students, you know. And in the next few months, I won't be doing much. You know, I have my career starting in the summer at a strategy consultant firm. And in the meantime, I've been studying for my GMAT, but something I'm really passionate about as alum and getting involved in the community. And if the will, if the district is willing to provide me any sort of touch point, any sort of contact person, I'm willing to get involved and build some sort of stronger alumni relation or alumni association myself from the ground up. All I need is to get my foot in the door. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say you're very well spoken, much like your mother. Listen, I think it's a great idea. And I am sure that many in this district would be happy-
Uh, listen, I think it's a great idea, and I am sure that many in this district would be happy to take you up on your offer. So I'll certainly speak with some people, and I would expect someone will follow up in the near future.
Thank you.
So if you could just leave your contact information with, like, the clerk of the district, I'm going to use that for now. It sounds like royalty. If you want to leave your information with her, I'll make sure that someone gets in touch with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming to speak to us.
Students, what like, what do you, what do you think about what he's talking about? I mean, do you see a purpose for an alumni association? I mean, do you see how that might benefit?
I mean, just recently, we had the last graduating class come in to talk about their college experience. And I think just sitting and be able to talk to them, and I mean, they're just a short age difference away, but even going, you know, older and older than that, I really do see the benefits of just hearing their experiences and the roads they took in high school that could help benefit the current students and as well as the paths that they're taking now to help lead us in the right direction. So as he mentioned before, I think that strong alum connection really is just a great benefit for us as students, and it goes beyond high school and into college and even in careers, as he mentioned before. So I think it's a very positive thing that we could look to implement. It would be very helpful.
Great, thanks. Ann?
Yeah, I have to agree. I mean, I think every, like he said, everyone here has probably used their connections to help them in their professional lives, and I think the earlier and earlier you start networking is better for your career and better for, like, just you learning how to communicate with, like, older people and people in different businesses, especially with the career guidance thing. I think that's a really important part of, you know, choosing what kind of college you're going to go to, what kind of choices you're going to make with your life. So I see, like, lots and lots of potential with that. And I, I think if people are willing to do it, our classes here would take more advantage of it than I think he even thinks, dreams of, you know.
Good, thank you.
I agree.
Any other public comments?
I just wanted to comment, I don't know where it goes, but on the front page of the website, there is a link to, says to join the Putnam Valley High School alumni. Did you click on that and fill that out, that form?
Yeah, I looked it up.
Okay, so I can follow up as to, I don't know who owns that, once you fill out the form, but I do see the form there to, to sign up to be part of the alumni network. But I'll certainly find out and get someone in contact with you. Thanks.
The challenge, having worked in alumni in the college level, the challenge that came up, because I was in the development office when Facebook was created. So I was one of the first people, because you had to have a dot edu to be able to be on Facebook. That created a challenge because they used to be closed systems, and you'd, you'd sign up with a service that was usually tied to what used to be the book where you could find, your alumni, the alumni list could go out to a vendor, and they go and send stuff out to to students or alums, and they fill the book with where people were, and it was outdated immediately. But then social media came in, and it kind of sucked it away, the alumni, a lot of the alumni stuff away from the schools because the students were going directly to each other instead of feeding through the school. And on a high school level, it's even harder because the email address is key for that, right? And email, you know, the school district does not collect or hold on to email addresses post-graduation, and that's the key to be able to keep that communication open. So it is a challenge. I, I, I hope you're able to get something on because I, it's been, it's key. That, being able to, networking is, is everything. So I appreciate you speaking and hopefully your helpful in the challenge.
Okay, any other public comment?
Since we're on the alumni kick, I'm going to do a selfish announcement for, we do have a career day coming up. And for any recent graduates or other alumni that are interested in coming, speaking a little bit about their career, they can reach out to Kendall Coleman at the middle school, and that's scheduled for May 5th. I believe, Dennis, you're already signed up, so are you aware of that?
I was just calling.
Okay. So, thanks, thanks, there, thanks for being voluntold. Uh, no, I'm sure you have a lot of important information that our, our students would benefit from. So selfless plug, if anyone else is out there and interested, or if you have any friends you think may be interested, invite them over. We'd love to get as diverse of a group as possible and give students a sense of different careers that exist out there. So, thank you.
Okay, then topics for upcoming meetings.
That's me, sorry.
That's you.
Yeah, look up, multitasking. I'm on the alumni kick.
Yeah, you want to look them up?
Actually, I have memorized them over there. So the next meeting is March 2nd. It's our full budget presentation for the first time. So Jill and myself will be presenting the full budget, and then the 16th will be a follow-up budget presentation. So those are our next two board meetings. Sounds exciting, right, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't wait.
Yeah, that's the, that's the kind of enthusiasm we like.
Okay, um, board member comments. Um, I wanted to say, I was really impressed with the National Honor Society, both the English Honor Society and the Science Honor Society inductions, at the number of students that were inducted. Um, and I was talking to Mr. Mello after the English one the other night, and I said, like, is, is it just me in my head that I've forgotten how many were inducted? He said, no, there were more. And I said, and like, what? Like, how do, like, what do you attribute it to? And so we were talking about it, and basically, he feels, and I agree, that just larger number of students are challenging themselves at higher levels. And that, so that makes them more eligible for the Honor Society. And I, I just think that that's an amazing thing, you know. Congratulations to the students, you know, who are really stepping up and challenging themselves. I think it's amazing, so I think it's great. The other thing is tomorrow, I'm going to spend the morning, hmm, at the Capitol Conference on Zoom. I don't know if anybody else is, but, um, tonight, we're missing the, I forget what.
West, or New York?
West, Dester Putnam is, is doing one with all of the, well, with many of the state senators and assembly people. Tomorrow, we're going to hear from the NISBA president, Commissioner Rosa, a legislative panel including Shelley Mayer, Assemblyman Michael Benedetto, and then a discussion with the governor's office. So that should be really interesting, um, conference. So I'm looking forward to that, sitting for four hours in front of my computer, looking at little tiny pictures. That's it, that's, those are my comments.
I just want to agree with you. You said I wasn't able to, I was out of town for the English, but the Science Honor Society was great. And you, I'm, I'm pronouncing it wrong, Ava McGinty did a wonderful job presenting her science research. And I was laughing when they was talking about the words he couldn't pronounce because the science research students, I'm sure, can pronounce those. They were great.
Well, and say them fast.
Exactly, and understand what they are, what they mean. The Mandarin, the Lunar New Year, that's the one that was, was so cute. That was, they were, I mean, that, that made my week that. So that was great to attend.
So, um, earlier this week, we were made aware that the library, Putnam Valley Town Library, is considering a budget proposal that goes directly to voters, as opposed to remaining on the contract with the town, with their position being that they have more things they need and want to do, and, and they, they need more resources and thinking that they might have a more opportunity to do that with public vote. And according to law and process, et cetera, the, the library can, will, will need to, to get signatures, and their board will need to vote, pick a dollar amount, et cetera, et cetera. And be, could be placed on the school board's budget vote in May. It would be a separate resolution from our budget vote and from our board electors, our board election. And there are apparently some other options, rather than being on the same ballot, in the same location, at the same time. But the more likely would be that it would appear on the school board budget ballot, and it, the dollar, the dollar amount would be up to their board. They, they would not be part of our budget. It would be an additional budget line. Essentially, we, as I understand it, we could, we would serve as tax collector for the library. And, um, they just started the conversation that this is what they were considering. They didn't say it was final, that they're definitely going to do that as far as the last conversation or the one conversation we had with them earlier this week. And I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that was a possibility. There's a number of things they would need to do on their side to be prepared in time to be able to, to get all those ducks in a row. I didn't know if anybody had any questions. I see that Terry Raskin is here from the library. If she wanted to give us more of a nuance than what I rudimentary just said, not as a sales pitch, just as far as process concerned, if anybody had any questions, it would be a good opportunity, seeing as time is an issue.
You have questions?
And, Joe, one thing that I think you just made it clear that if the library does vote on this, that we don't have a choice, yes or no, it's, that it goes on our ballot regardless.
It goes on our ballot. As far as I understand, Terry did mention at one point that there, there were other options. I don't know any of them viable for them or, or for us. But I'll, I'll let Terry kind of give the general, if we, if our understanding is correct so far.
And the only other thing before you go on is, is it also the library board elections would be on that same? Is that a separate?
That would be separate.
Okay.
But those would be public, the way that we have done them in the past.
Okay.
Yeah. But this is section 259 of state education law. You may be familiar with the two attempts we did at a 414, section 414. It is different in that the 414 requires a large number of petitions, and it's all, it puts the ballot, it puts the question on the ballot on the November election. And the town would collect the taxes and disperse it to us. Like the previous speakers, we believe in sustainability, and this would give us, for the first time ever, a sustainable budget. In fact, we are in a very small minority of libraries, certainly within the Mid-Hudson Library System and throughout the state, that do not have sustainable budgets, that is, budgets that we can count on for a number of years. Once we set the amount, we would get the same amount every year until we decide, and we would not be doing this every year, until we decide to either go for another public vote on increasing it or even decreasing it. I'm waiting for that millionaire to put us in his, or her, in his or her will. And when we get that million-dollar request, we will definitely be, well, naming a library after that person. Because I'll, you give me enough money, and I'll name anything after you. And reducing the budget, of course. You know, we're doing this for the future. We're doing this for the future of our library, for the future of our patrons, the town, the kids, everyone. We, we have dual, you know, we have a dual interest or same interest between the two of us in that it is for educational purposes. It's the most important thing we can do with our town, with our lives. And much like you have the taxpayers directly approving your budget, we want to have the taxpayers directly approving ours. The town has been as generous as they can with our contract. It does not cover all of our expenses. And even though there have been minor increases every year, because of inflation, we're actually in a position where we've been decreased with the amount of money that we have to spend. We want to restore services. We, you know, we had to cut out Sunday hours. We've had to cut back our hours. We want to do a second night. We want to have programs for kids, or, you know, even older kids on the weekends, so they have something to do. More programs, more books. Right now, we've cut back on the books that we order, not just physical books, but we have, we do, a lot of our borrowing, our lending is in eBooks, and we don't own those. You buy an eBook, and after X number of borrows, we've got to buy it again. It's not like the physical books. You know, we have, we just, or we're about to acquire a 3D printer. We'd like to expand that kind of program. I'm sure you have 3D printers here, but we want to have people who don't have access to the schools or the ability to use those, and we need programs around that to teach people. You know, again, we're, we're aligned. We're all about education, and this is the reason we want, we not want, we need to do this. We've been operating on a shoestring budget for years. Now we want that pair of shoes to go with it. Questions?
What about our Cortland Manor and Maya PAC voters? How will that be managed?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Our Cortland Manor and Maya PAC voters?
Yes, that's going to happen. That, what is going to happen is, right now, we are, the, the taxed citizens are those who are in the library district, which, as you said, are that little group of Maya PAC voters and Cortland Manor. The Cortland Manor is a very small number of people. Now, it's going to be, the taxing would be on the people who are in the school district. So we take some, we lose Maya PAC, but we gain some of Cold Spring Garrison. The Cortland Manor, we may lose, except for, as I understand it, there are some people who are tuitioned in that would be affected. I'm not quite sure how that works.
Yeah, I think we got a little background. So what we would be gaining by going from the town district or the library district to the school district would be additional Cortland Manor students because we have a, a section, a significant section of Cortland Manor students who attend Putnam Valley. The other, there may be a few homes in, in Garrison and Phillips Town, but I think we have a significant number of homes within Cortland Manor, over by the Shell Station in that region over there, that are part of our school district, and they would now have an opportunity to vote on the library. We would be losing residents over in, like, Barker Street in that area. Many of those residents attend either Maya PAC or Lakeland School District, even though it's a Putnam Valley mailing address. Those individuals now vote, it, now vote, I guess, they'll vote on the, the library budget.
Their library district is, yeah, Maya PAC. But we would also get some of those who, for example, we'd be taking away from, uh, I'm sorry, what's the little tiny library? Not, uh, the, Reed, yeah, over in Carmel. We would be taking a small bite into that district as well. So it, it kind of evens out. It's one or the other.
And it, I mean, it's really not a ma, it's...
There would be a shift in eligible voters. Who's eligible to vote?
Right, however, the, the library's not voted on now anyway.
Right. I'm saying if they went the 414 route versus the 259.
Correct. If they went 414, it'd be a different, a slightly different elector base.
The town board.
Yeah.
No, I know we had, I mean, I'll, I'll address the elephant in the room. Yeah, we, mea culpa. We screwed up on the numbers on that first 414, but certainly not on the second one. And our margin of loss was pretty small. But I'm looking forward to a victory this time, if, if we do this. Again, we're just in the exploratory stage. We're not certain yet. We're crunching numbers. And we want to do what's best for the community.
Right.
Thank you.
You know, one of my concerns is that it's, people confuse, I mean, they confuse, they're going to see Putnam Valley School District budget number and a board election, and then they'll see the library one, but when they get their bill, it's all going to be one, and...
No, it'll be two lines. There'll be two lines.
But it will be one check that they're writing to Putnam Valley School District.
But they're, you know.
And I just, I just want to be sure that our education of our community, if, if you go this route, that, that, that we do a real outreach to the community, so they understand exactly what it is that they're voting on.
Right. And, you know, they're paying per household right now for the contract that we have with the town. It's shifting it over. Now, there's some technical stuff we're going to have to change our fiscal year, you know, but then we will make adjustments for that. And any money that is... Uh, and any money that is not being taxed now by the town, or, and the money that the town is not taxing the citizens for, for our contract, anything that is remaining will go back into the general fund. Uh, and that, that's my understanding of that. So the town isn't going to have a bonanza suddenly of three hundred thousand plus that they're, they're not, you know, they're, they're going to give it back, you know? It's going to get used for other services, for whatever is needed. And that will lower, I, I imagine that will lower the effective town tax rate. It's a shifting of who bills for this.
So.
Who votes and who bills.
And who, when do you, like, what's your timeline? How do you see this?
Our next board meeting is, uh, the day after.
Twenty-seventh.
The holiday, yep. So, uh, we're going to look at it. Then we're going to have another meeting to crunch some more numbers, and we may, we're probably going to vote on it as early as the end of this month.
Jill or Maureen, what's the deadline for our ballot preparation?
I have to fill legal notes. First thing is the legal notes, the paper. I have to have it in by, I need to have it approved by this board by March sixteen.
March sixteenth, so, boy, that's a short, yeah.
You'll have, if we do this, you'll have that in time. Absolutely.
Okay. Terry, do you have a ballpark of percentage that you'd like to set?
No, not at this point. Still have to look at the formula, crunch the numbers, work it, see. You know, it's, yeah, we could ask for a seventy-five percent increase very happily, but that would never sell. And that's not fair. We're not going to do that. We're going to make it palatable, but we're going to make it so that it's supporting our needs. Because the board, the library board's responsibility is to make sure that we can operate, that we can run, keep running, and that we can keep providing the services that we do and add to that. Thank you.
And just real quick, and again, the March meeting would be, we really would just be accepting it, that it would be on our ballot, because we don't have a right to, if it comes to us, we don't have a right to refuse it.
I think it's, you know, it's probably the, just the terminology and making sure that it is phrased properly. We have a little experience in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.